Good afternoon, everyone. Okay. Today's Tuesday, July 6th, not a Monday, and this is our work session, first work session in July. And we have Jack is visiting us via Zoom. Either in his office at home or or on the desk, one or the other. I'm not sure where. So first up, we have Debbie Stam. She's going to give us an update on the Mitchell Landing project. You have the floor?
Yes, thank you very much for squeezing me in at the last minute. As you all know, we recently discovered a maintenance issue at Mitchell Landing Apartments in building 139. And we had originally received preapproval from CDA to incur up to $20,000 worth of expenses for the tenant relocation needs to get the tenants from building 139 relocated. Since then, we have received a proposal from WCBM, who is the structural inspection engineer who's going to inspect not only building 139, but because of what happened to 139, we want to make sure we are up to speed on the conditions under all of the buildings. So we're going to contract with WCBM to do complete inspections, structural inspections under all of the buildings. So that cost estimate came in at $31,293. So I sent another email up to Catherine Spencer at CDA last Thursday, asked her to please authorize another $40,000 worth of expenditures. So she has done so. So I have quickly revised the ordinance that is in the in progress from $20,000 to $60,000 so that we can increase the project expenditure account by that much and make sure we have enough to cover these bills. Now, once we have, we've so far paid all the tenant relocation expenses and we paid the environmental contractor for the moisture and mold environmental testing. And that will leave us with about $12,000. So once we've paid this plus those two bills, we're still going to have about $20,000 for any additional expenses that might come down. So hopefully that'll hold us for a little while.
Any questions?
So I just want to, I do have a question. So this increase of the $31,000 is for the inspection for the all the buildings?
Yes, for all four buildings. They're going to do a structural inspection of the bare beams under all four buildings. And they're also going to the geotechnical engineering services necessary to create a rehab plan for the buildings as necessary, if any of them need additional rehab.
Yeah, because this money is just right now, just for the inspection. We don't have any idea the actual repair costs.
No, right now, this is just for the structural inspection and the engineering services needed to formulate a plan for rehab. This does not include the actual rehab itself, unfortunately.
When the rehab plan comes out, will we still be getting reimbursed from the same source?
Yes.
Because I guess the city will have to fix the buildings, whatever the plan is, and then upfront, but then we're going to be getting reimbursed from the same source. Is that correct?
Right. That's what the reserve for replacement account is for.
Yeah, could I ask a question? Okay, being the all four buildings are being inspected, okay? And the other tenants from 139 have been moved. If they find the same condition with the other buildings, will those tenants have to be removed as well?
I'm going to defer to that, yes, sir.
If it were determined that they were structurally inadequate, we wouldn't have an option. We would have to relocate the tenants from another building or unit in the building the same way we were able to do so with the previous tenants in 139. So we would, you know, handle all those relocation fees just like we did in Severn with finding the different properties that were available for rental. Our hope is that that's not the case. We had done an initial inspection on each additional building over at Mitchell Landing. And, you know, it was myself and Chad and Dan, we did not have the ability to determine if it was structurally sufficient. And speaking with Mike Zimmerman from DID, he suggested that we get a firm in to actually do a real assessment to determine what our needs are at the facilities. There is a possibility. The conditions that we noticed at the facilities in each building were not similar to that of 139 when we were able to get under there and do that initial inspection.
Okay, now let me ask you another question. If have to move, as the other tenants did, what are we planning on doing with that building? Are we, like you said, I heard him say rehab, but are we rehabbing or are we turning it down?
I think that's part of what the structural process is, is for them to determine what the cost is. You know, we were initially notified from Severn was, you know, through a work order essentially that came through that had some verbiage about the foundation of the property, which is when we were alerted that we should go over and get it. So I think, you know, right now, we just need to determine what the cost is to do the repair. Our hope would be that we would have the funding to repair it, that it would be close to the initial estimate. But we think it will be more than that with the initial estimate it was that Severn had provided us.
Okay, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
Now, if the tenants that are moved, after you do the rehab, will they be allowed to move back in there? I know they have to go through a formality. I know they have to go through an application format again, but will they be, I mean, because they were removed, not on their account, will we allow them to come back and have those?
I think that we could have that conversation with Severn if they're still managing the property that time, or if there's a new management company. It depends how far down the line it is. And I think we could make that recommendation that they would have first opportunity to move back into that property. I don't see that, see that that would be an issue. I think that would be fair.
Well, I want to say something in reference to Severn. And I could be wrong, but I don't think I am. Severn is not really managing that complex as well as it should be. You barely, rarely find a manager over there. I've been there several times and they've never been there. So I think that the city should get someone else to manage that complex. I really do. That's going to be there. That's going to man, how can you have apartment manager issues for one apartment complex together, jumping around? You need somebody who is there all the time. You can't manage something if you're not there. And that's the way I feel. And she has not been there. And that's been some years ago, not just one manager, several of the management that had been in, managers that have been in there, they're not there. I mean, they're there like maybe one or two days and then it's a half a day. I'm going through the same thing with the manager that I have, who is not being in that office. And I feel like if you're not going to provide the services that the tenants need and to keep them safe and their inhabitants, then I don't think you should be there. And I really think that, and this is my spin. I think Severn, I think we should find another company to manage. I really do. Because they haven't been doing a very good job, and I've seen that with my own eyes.
Mr. Vice President?
Yes, sir.
Just one, I don't disagree with April, but I think that it's my understanding that there is an investigation going to be going on. And I'm sure that at the end of the investigation, the administration will come back with a recommendation relative to the process moving forward.
Thank you, Jack. Thanks, Ron.
Any other questions? All right, Debbie, thank you for the update. Any, if there is any, any changes, you know, let us know. And if we need to appropriate some more funds, you know, let us know. How long, how long do we think it will take for the inspection from the engineer?
Plan right now is to have them in mid-July. Part of the health absorbed the cost of it, our, the team from ACDD is going to actually be taking care of clearing the access points for the foundations. And they, once they get in there, I don't know exactly how long. I would guess they'll be able to complete those and within a week, at least the initial inspections to determine the structure and then provide the documents. And do you have any idea, and you can think how long it would take to provide that documentation? Okay, yeah. So we'll, we'll know about the initial inspections, I mean, I think relatively quickly, but then the cost of rehabilitation, what it'll need, materials, things like that, we could look up to.
So once we get that, I would say, let's, let's put this back on a work session agenda. Once we get that, just for public transparency. And, and then, you know, just make sure when we get the list and we have the items and the punch list and everything we need to do, do it.
And I want to say one more thing. Severn didn't find these people places to stay. I want to let you know that. I call Homes of America and Habitat of America to find places for these people to go. And every place that these people are is one of Homes of America Habitat housing units. So Severn didn't. Now, the lady that I spoke to from Habitat and Homes of America, she did communicate with Severn. But I'm the one who initiated that because those people need their place to stay and they were really, in a way, and they needed somewhere to go immediately because I didn't want something to happen to them and their families. And Severn wasn't moving fast enough. Severn was giving them people the runaround. So I just want to let you know.
Very much. Ms. Jackson?
For this increase, do we, do we? Because it's, if we look at the ordinance, we've crossed out the old number, put in the new number. Do we have to vote on that?
It'll be next, it'll be
at the work session.
For the legislative session, it'll, but that'll be changed. It'll come to us clean.
I think it's important to have a discussion on such a large jump today. Did you saw that?
All right, everybody good? Moving forward to next week? Good, Jack? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Amanda. Update on the Somerset Natural Gas Project.
Good afternoon. So this is our monthly update for the Chesapeake project. As of their update on June 21st, approximately 94% of the pipeline's been installed within the city. As we mentioned at the last monthly update, we were due to invite Chesapeake Utilities here, so I wanted to introduce Jared Shelton. And he can answer some of the questions that you had last month about restoration over the pipeline, as well as just given overall staff updates. Turn it over to Jared.
Sure. Thank you, Amanda. Thank you, Council, for this opportunity. I know it was almost exactly six months ago that we met. We just met with you via Zoom. I think it was January 19th. Work, physical work on the project actually began the day before that meeting, January 18th. And so we're about six months in now. The project is on schedule, which means we are on schedule to deliver gas to Eastern Provincial Institution and have gas available to UMS by the end of September of this year, which is good news. It's good that it's not been quite as bad spring and summer as it was the last couple of years, I think. I do want to mention something about the, the item that's highlighted, 94% of the pipeline, that's 94% of the linear footage of the pipe in the ground. So even though you might think there's only 6% of the work left, there's a little bit more than that. Some time consuming work that has to do with purging of the lines, cleaning the lines that have been installed, making sure they're free of any contaminant or moisture, and then doing the physical tie-ins. And that work's scheduled to be completed by the mid to end of August, again, weather permitting. But things are looking good for by the end of August for all work within the city of Salisbury to be complete on the line as far as installation. It would be after that point that we'd be wrapping up the rest of the restoration work, which in this case is virtually just grass seed, regrading and grass seed in every instance. I know Amanda related to me a question that was related to her about the possibility of planting along a specific right-of-way between the hospital and Evo Craft Brewery. And our limitation there is the fact that we are leasing a right-of-way from the railroad Norfolk Southern. And according to federal energy regulatory requirements, we have to go by what their requests are as far as the restoration there. And they will let us do nothing in that area except for grass. And so that's why we've been unable to even propose a plan or
Not even a fence?
A fence?
Nothing.
Well, I hadn't heard fence.
I'm saying anything. That was just such a huge visual asset and overnight it was gone. And I just, there's got to be, I mean, grass is lovely. It's wonderful, but nothing, not a fence, no bushes, nothing.
That is the answer we've been given.
Yeah, I can, I can probably understand too. Because plants, roots, I mean, the pipeline.
You can go three feet back from where that pipeline is and plant it. You can go three feet up and plant it. Bushes that roots don't go. So how far down do you have those pipes?
The, well, that transmission line in that area, the alignment is almost exactly underneath from the line of trees used to be where the new pipe went in the ground. And that's about four feet deep. Then there's a distribution line, which I forget now what size it is, a horned round or six inch round. So that's a transmission line underneath where the trees used to be. Then there's a distribution gas line that's almost right under the eastern edge of the sidewalk that's there, that lines. So there's actually two gas lines there. And the concerns are only roots, although that is a concern. It's the necessary leak detection work that we have to do as utilities. You know, we're mandated that we have to leak survey every foot of our hundreds of miles of pipe, once every three years. It's on a rolling schedule in order to be able to get to those areas and have clear access to those locations.
And not even a fence, not even a wrought iron fence. I'm just, I'm just talking out there. Yeah, a pollinator garden. I mean, I just really, I just want to put it out there. If you can go back to them and just, if there's anything, a fence, that is just such a huge section that was just totally obliterated and it does take a lot away from the visual quality of that particular area. That's just.
Yes, and I hope I can assure the council that I've, I've been relaying your messages to our senior management. One reason why I'm here is I'm a resident of Salisbury. And I hope I can assure you that I've been painting a clear picture for them of what drastic change that view, especially from the downtown area toward hospital, toward the railroad. But I'll continue to carry the message. At this point, though, it's a Norfolk Southern question. And they haven't budged.
Jared, can I ask?
Yes.
Thanks for being here. The, the right-of-way right there is Norfolk Southern, but Blair and Ear owns a portion of the property closer to the highway, right?
I know that I'm not positive.
Where those showburns were. I think there's some other property that's owned there. I didn't know, you know, just having the same conversation, if you want to explore that and whether there's some opportunity to partner.
I think it's of a reindeer property?
I think so.
Well, let me check into that. I'm not positive. I'll check into that because that could make a difference if there's a strip or something there that's not impacted by Norfolk.
I could be wrong, but I think so.
Do you know approximately the distance between the two pipelines?
Oh, I would just be guessing.
Guessing, more than four feet or?
Oh, yes, much more.
If you.
Okay. And that could be part of the limitation too, because if we've got a clearance of five feet on either side of the distribution line, it would be normal. And went up to 15 feet on either side of the transmission line to each other, it may be overlapping.
Well, I do appreciate you being here. What I, I don't have my card, but I guess I gave them all out at MML.
A lot of emails now.
Yeah, the higher up, he could email me directly if he, I would really like that. So you have to just want to go on discussion. I guess if there's anything, and I know there's limitations and I can understand the position, but I just feel that it's, it's our town and it was really a lot of trees overnight with no, you know, and it just really does make a difference. So I appreciate you coming here and relaying the message. Thanks.
Jack, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I just have one. Jared, thank you for coming back. I asked a question six, about six months ago now about the impact that the pipeline will have on our rail trail. And I'm sure since we've heard nothing, there is no, it's been confirmed, there is no impact relative to our rail trail. Am I correct?
You're welcome.
Well, I may defer to Amanda to, to correct me here if I'm wrong. Chesapeake Utilities has had several meetings with Amanda and her folks about the rail trail project, about changes. You know, every project has changes as it progresses, possible alignments for different phases of the project. I think at this point, we've confirmed that there are no, there's no interference from our project, from the state one of our project to the proposed rail trail. We hope that there's an opportunity for us to partner with the city in some way for the rail trail, whether it's, I know one possibility that's mentioned, for instance, there's a, there's a section of a proposed rail trail phase that would need an easement from Chesapeake Utilities. That's something we're working on, getting corporate approval to grant that easement. So we think it's a great project. We want to be able to help further any way we can. No, no interference or conflict at this point.
Well, so I'm confused because as I heard there, you're, we're waiting for confirmation that part of the rail trail is requesting an easement from Chesapeake Utilities. So there is a conflict. We're just, we have a potential solution, but not, it's not a done deal yet. Is that correct, Amanda?
So that's an area that's outside of Norfolk Southern's right-of-way. So that's an easement we're looking at for Chesapeake. So it's not a conflict with their pipeline. It's, it's property outside of the Norfolk Southern right-of-way. Because essentially, we're not hindered by the pipeline because we still have not been able to get access through Norfolk Southern. So we've been looking at areas adjacent to that right-of-way, which is how this easement came up. So they're, they're trying to help us get through in an area where Norfolk Southern will not.
Okay, so the rail trail still as proposed for the majority of the run, with the exception of this potential easement.
So we had been looking at alternative alignments to the rail trail all along it. Because essentially, at the very beginning, once we finished the study, Norfolk Southern had said, we do not want this in our right-of-way. So we've been forced to go outside of their right-of-way all along the rail trail. So we are looking at easements and alternative routing throughout the entire rail trail. So this is one of those easement areas. So that's why their pipeline really is not impacting us because for the most part, they are in the Norfolk Southern right-of-way. We have not been able to go in the Norfolk Southern right-of-way.
Okay, at some point, when, when we get closer to the beginning or the first shovel in the ground, could we have an update to the council on what the, because I remember the drawings and the, that we had done through those meetings with the, that we held the fire, fire station.
Yes.
And I'd be curious to see how that's changed over the, over the period.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you. No other questions. Thank you, Mr. Vice President.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. And
Thank you.
Good day. And we'll move on to the next item. Amanda, this is the annual Vision Zero update.
And I'm going to invite up Will White, our transportation project specialist. So when we passed the Vision Zero Action Plan a few years ago, we said that we would give council an update every July. So this is our first annual update for what we've accomplished in FY21, and I'm going to let, we'll go over that in just a minute. But I did want to note that you'll see a lot of new things in fiscal year 22 because the council was able to fund pedestrian signals, more crosswalks, ADA upgrades, the slow zone program, speed awareness and safety programs. So there was $112,500 worth of Vision Zero funding adopted in this year's budget. So we're thrilled about that. So in addition to the other bicycle projects, we have targeted Vision Zero projects coming in this next year. So Will is going to give an overview of our annual report, and I will note that it is on the city's website under the Infrastructure and Development Department in the Transportation section.
Good evening. So the report basically starts off with an overview of Vision Zero for people who might, this might be the first documentation they're seeing of it in relation to our successes where the report really picks up as far as an update for FY21. It's covering projects completed. In this year, we completed, obviously, the Main Street, which was a safety project as much as anything else. Riverside Circle, Sidewalk End project and the Church Street Doverdale community, the Division Street Bike Way, Northwest Bike Way Phase 1, that's Lake and Isabella Streets. And then what's currently under construction at this moment is the Fitzwater Parsons Bike Way and Church Street ADA upgrades kicked off this morning. For upcoming this year, projects we have in design that are on the schedule is Carroll Street is nearing 90% design level. It should begin construction this year with any luck. Promenade at Eastern Shore Drive, South Bullburn is fully designed. When it's micro-sourced this year, that bike way should be implemented. Rail Trail Phase 7B is obviously finishing up design and preparing for implementation through a tax grant. Phase 1 is under design with funding from the Maryland Department of Transportation Bike Ways Program. West College Avenue Bike Way Design from US 13 to Riverside Drive is also a Bike Ways Grant. So that is also under design currently. And we have applied for funding for a design of Northwest Bike Ways Phase 2, so that's West Road. Mostly successes this past year. All the delays that we've had on some programs were related to COVID. So it was programs that mentoring programs between the fire department and police department, but they just didn't have in-person interaction. As far as all our goals in the action plan, we are making progress in all of them. So to recap, that's reducing speed to safe levels. Maybe crashes on the high injury network, reducing occurrences of all crashes on city streets by 50% by 2030, reducing occurrences of all, excuse me, reduce VMT by 15% by 2030. And expanding our education outreach. That's the only one where there's some significant delay due to the COVID pandemic. Some data updates from this past year. We unfortunately did have some serious and fatal bike crashes to some streets were added, including West Road, were added to our high injury network. In regards to our goals for VMT and declining our crash rate and our crash rate to come down, work from home helped originally because there was obviously a huge, huge decrease in vehicle miles traveled across the board, right? But then we followed a national trend where our serious crashes started to tick up because the roads were open, so more speeding. We are not as bad as many other places, so it's showing some success. As far as our breakdowns in 2019 and 2020, we are continuing at or continue to decrease over the previous year's 2015 and 2018 data. So we're showing some, it's documented in here, about a 3% trend line down on pad and bike crashes. Of course, it's only a few years, so that can change. And then upcoming trends that we're watching is, you know, obviously the return of micro mobility, shared micro mobility to cities. So bird scooters are back. That should help decrease, you know, lost travel time. A general increase in walking and biking. So biking alone, based on some data we had, is up 60 to 80% in the city over the past year. So that's going in line with our increase in bike infrastructure and the fact that people have more time. So that's kind of a general trend across the country with some places seeing up to like 130% increase. So it, we're right in the middle of those places across the country. And of course, e-bikes and e-scooters have arrived. So that's one of the things we're watching, obviously increased speeds, more people are adopting them. They make it easier for people with disability to ride. So there's obviously increasing usage. And then the, the report closes with a grant funding summary of what currently grant projects we have and then current grant funding that we have asked for. So and of course, we are available for any questions at any time.
Any questions? Jack, do you have any questions?
I know I have a comment. Looking over the document, there's been progress. I think that I know that part of it's been affected by COVID on both, both ways. Also, I've noticed that since COVID has sort of declined with more cars on the street, it seems like drivers are more aggressive than they used to be. So maybe they have to relearn, but I think this is a good path. So maybe they have to relearn, but I think this is a good path. I think that we're, we're pretty much on target. We can see both from an environmental impact and a aesthetic impact, the results of the work that you have done. And I, I have great confidence that we're going to start to see the numbers go down again, especially with the increased use of the bike paths. So thank you very much for what you've done.
I agree, I agree with Jack. I mean, it's beautiful, everything is okay, but it does, I have to say myself, it causes me to have to slow down. Because I'm, I can be a speed demon at times. I really get, and especially when I'm on Fitzwater Street, I'm like, okay, slow down, sister, because you know, and you've done a remarkable job with paving. It's remarkable. I know some people are very unsatisfied with that, but change has to come, and that's what I try to get people to see. And because from what I'm understanding, our roads and highways haven't been done like almost 40 to 60 years. So it's a great impact to the communities. It is, but it's for their safety, and that's what I relate to them, and I appreciate everything.
That's the purpose of the design, is for you to slow down.
Yeah.
So I have a, I have a question. I know you took out one of the lights on Church Street. There's one more, I think, at Priscilla. Is, we are taking that one out?
So we still have to run the warrant analysis on it. We actually just recently got a piece of equipment that'll let us run warrant analysis faster.
Okay.
We had done a speed study on that and at several other locations over the course of 2019 to 2020. And anything that was right on the line, we decided not to touch just because the, the numbers are off from travel. So even the, the correction factors from M.D. chose not to make that decision yet. So we'll, with the new piece of equipment, thanks for turning it on.
Yeah, I like the, I like the new, I like the stop sign at Church Street, the one with the lights on it. That's, I, I like those. And, and they, they seem to, especially when you make a change like that, it, it helps to educate that, that something's different here. So, but a, a great job. And, uh, you know, we're, we're seeing an impact and, and, you know, and the design is to slow us down. And because we don't need to be driving 40, 50 miles an hour in our neighborhoods. So thank you for, for all you, for all you do. Any other comments or questions? Appreciate it. Amanda, don't go anywhere. This is the Salisbury City Council meeting featuring Amanda Pollitt. So next up is our several resolutions for the Ross.
Hey, I'll invite Nick Simpson up. So we'll, we'll take these one at a time in, in order. So the first item is the connection fee waiver. And so previously, the council had approved capacity fee waivers for all three of the parcels that make up and the, the code has since changed. So we no longer have capacities. We now have connection fees. And we adopted a new ordinance last year, ordinance 2611, that did away with the old program. So we used to have a bank of EDUs associated with the linens of the week, and we were kind of counting down on that thing. We don't have that anymore. So we put some stricter requirements in place for eligibility of the program under ordinance 2611. So this is actually the first project coming to you under this new program. So essentially, when an application comes in, the Department of Infrastructure and Development reviews it, and we did find that it was eligible for the new program. This will do away with all three prior approvals. So two of the prior ones had expired. One was still on the books, but I had talked to Nick, and we thought it made more sense to have one clean approval going forward for connection fees, since that was under the old program and related to capacity fees. So the, the request here is a waiver of 104 equivalent dwelling units or EDUs. Our current rate for connection charges is $3,710 per EDU. So the waiver request is equivalent to $385,840. And I want to give Nick an opportunity just to mention why this is important in the grand scheme of the development, how this kind of plays into his financial perspective.
Yeah, so this is, going back to day one, this is something we had, we knew that the, the bank was available, so we approached you guys. Now, I'm sure this is like the fifth time. We're just looking to regather some of the previous approvals. We figured this was a cleaner to do it, since we're doing a lot line consolidation, and it's going to become one parcel over there. And hopefully this can get us going this fall.
Any questions, comments?
Just one clarification. The original connection fee waiver we granted was for the Ross at a 12-story. Am I correct? And now it's for an eight-story? And then the building, and, and the building next door to it. It used to be the old chamber.
So the original, the Ross is still 12 stories. It's the chamber building now is taller at eight stories. So that additional EDUs is reflected in this.
Okay, so the original, just for the, so that we understand completely, the original waiver was for how much money?
So when you added up all three of the previous approvals, it was for 91.84 EDUs. So it was 92 EDUs at the lower capacity fee rate. So I actually don't have that total, but it would have been just under, I think it was like in the 340,000.
35,000, yeah.
A little bit less. But so it was approximately 92 EDUs. We're now looking at 104. So it, it's comparable to what you were looking at before.
Okay. No questions. Thank you.
Good, good with that one. Everybody good to move that forward?
Hey, great. So then the next one associated with the Ross is the Soil Memorandum of Understanding. So as, as you all would recall, we have a stockpile of excess soil at the wastewater treatment was from the construction of the wastewater treatment plant. So we still have that soil. Field operations is used occasionally for their use. We have offered it to developers on an as-is basis. So we, we make no claims about how clean it is, or if it has clay or anything else, but anyone is available to use it. So we had previously approved through resolution, an agreement that gave the Ross the ability to use that soil. The dates in that agreement have expired, so they are seeking to utilize that soil for the construction of the building. So this is a new resolution and new agreement with revised dates. They're targeting beginning the transportation of soil for August 1st of this year, and then completing soil transportation by March 1st of next year, and targeting a certificate of occupancy on September 30th of 2023. So those are the dates in the revised agreement. Again, we're making no statements as to the quality or quantity of soil, but whatever is there is available on a first come, first served basis.
Better pattern.
Yeah, we've actually tested the soil with Hillis Kearns. For the most part, it's, it's clean soil. I'd be happy to provide that to other people, but that, that, what, you know, just on a preliminary basis, if they want to look at it. I don't want to be responsive for their dirt, but we have tested it and are certainly interested in, in the access to it.
Any questions, comments? You good? All right. All right, we'll get to move that forward.
So the next one is the Ross's Horizon Program Agreement. So this is the first Horizon application that the city has received. Of course, you just adopted the program last week, so the Ross was first in line. So the way this program will work in the process is an application, we review it and provide a letter of intent. So the letter of intent is in your package, and that letter of intent includes an estimated tax schedule. Now, a few things about that tax schedule, if you've looked at it, this is based on the current tax rate. So we put a note that taxes will likely increase every year, so this is not exact. And then this is also based on an estimated assessed value after completion of construction. So again, this tax schedule could very well and, and will likely change with the actual assessed value and with a different tax rate. But it does give you an idea of how many, you know, what quantity of taxes would have been assessed based on project completion, what would be waived with a Horizon tax credit, and then what would be due. So that is in your package as well as a draft agreement. So once we draft the letter of intent, we send it to the developer. Nick reviewed it and signed it, and then I met with the mayor, got his approval to come to review, and then this is the next step. So with the Horizon program, you will look at it on a case-by-case basis, just like we do with the connection fees and everything else. So you'll, you'll see every application that we get that we deem to be eligible for the program. So again, this is the first one. We do believe that it is eligible. Is there anything you wanted to add to this?
This is, this is huge. I mean, I, I can't understand, I cannot understand how important this is. This is, I hope this moves a lot of developments downtown forward. And with a little, a little bit of luck, we'll have some friends across the hall joining you guys. And this would be, this would be fantastic for our project.
Any questions or comments? Mr. Heath?
No questions or comments.
So, you know, the only thing, you know, I'm, I'm in full support of this. I think this is going to be the catalyst project for downtown. I think it's vitally important that we move this forward and get it done, because it's going to lead to all the other properties that need to be done that are currently not on the tax rolls, our parking lots. They, they don't, they don't pay taxes. So and ultimately, the goal is to get them on the tax rolls, to pay taxes, be productive properties, businesses, places for people to live. So, and I, I support this 100%. Do we have consent to move this forward?
Yes.
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 Nick, if you just want to let everybody know, we're going to see a crane downtown, that would
And there's a, there's a picture in the packet that actually shows the trees between Eva. I'm just saying, I'm just saying, Jack, it, it's beautiful. It's beautifully landscaped.
Andy's looking for a part-time job for a crane operator on the weekends, so he's
Nick, I will be willing to drive back to watch that crane.
I can opt to stand there and watch.
All right, thank you very much. We appreciate it. We'll see you Monday night. And at this time, we'll go to administration comments.
Well, good evening, everybody. It's been a while since I've been in front of you, so good to see everybody. Just wanted to thank everybody that was involved in the fireworks this weekend, have a successful, safe fireworks show. So I know city team, county team, Board of Ed, Red, White &amp; Boom volunteers, they've all got a hitch. And it is the new fiscal year as of last Thursday, and I already saw just requisitions for ladder truck. So we are quickly moving forward with the budget that you provided us, so thank you again for that. Tonight, as Nick is literally just going to go across the hall, county council is, is having a conversation and work session on their version of the Horizons package. So if any of you are able to attend, public comment is before the work session. It looks like a light agenda for the first part of the meeting. Please, please attend or make sure your thoughts are known.
No, I appreciate seeing some fine folks at MML. It was a few days. My horse voice is not from MML. It was a great event. I think we learned a lot. We got to induct the new MML president, our mayor. That was exciting. And then I certainly got to spend some time with, with the governor and some other electeds. So I think it was overall a great week. A few days, so looking forward to this upcoming year, serving alongside the mayor as, as he does MML stuff, so.
Thanks, Bruton.
Awesome. All right, council?
Only thing I have to say is MML was wonderful. What part that I did get to see and stay at, I got feeling bad. But I enjoyed myself. I enjoyed, you know, I wanted to be there for the mayor. I really wanted to, but I just didn't, I couldn't do it. But I missed you, Jack, and I missed you, Mire. I really did. I missed y'all this year. Saw Andy, just had a wonderful time with everyone. I mean, and you get to meet so many different people from all walks of life, from the state of Maryland, and it was just wonderful. We just had a good time together. It's just like when we get together, we're family. And that's just how it feels like. We're all family, enjoying how little debates every now and then. But we, we're cool, we're cool. I mean, we're really cool. We had conversations, but, but not with all three of us, but we were, we had a good time, so. But we had a great time, and we really did, we really did. And I appreciate seeing Governor Holman and Yummy. And all the other ones that were running for governor were there. So I just want to remind people and everyone to still mask up every now and then, if you haven't had your COVID shots. COVID is real. Continue to social distance. And it's a new variant going out, so just be careful, just be mindful, you know, protect yourself and protect others. Thank you.
Well, the MML was wonderful. I networked a lot. I think there's going to be a lot of partnership with the university moving forward. With some research students there, it's a macro programming. I'm going to get more detail about that like in about two weeks. So that's really good. And just, if you're healthy enough, please donate blood.
Well, MML was a lot of fun. It's my first time here. And, and meet all the folks there. Just want to say, yeah, please, please mask up if you can, if you're not vaccinated and like I said, the, the other variants that are coming out, it's looking more and more like you're vaccinated, change your mask still. So just please be careful.
Mr. Heath, what's the word for MML North Day?
I'm not sure how to take the comment about they had more fun when I wasn't there. You did, April. And then you said you had more fun. That's okay. I, I, I forgive you. That's okay.
You haven't turned down, because I really missed you all.
Well, seriously, on a serious note, you know, it's amazing, sometimes we don't, we don't take the time to smell the roses. And even though it was a report about Vision Zero, if you thumb through that document, see what's been accomplished in the last year and year and a half and two years, it kind of gives you a good, certainly gives me a good feeling. We have come a long way, even though we have a long way to go. But it's so encouraging to see what we're going to, what's going to happen on Eastern Shore Drive, what's going to happen with the bike, the bike pathway. This city is growing and going places. There is no question about it. And I'm hoping that we're at a point where the momentum is so great that anybody that wants to try to stop it won't be able to. And on the last note, please be careful when you're out there. There is a variant around. If you haven't been vaccinated, get so, please. It's good for you and it's good for everybody else around you. And have a great week, and we'll see you at the legislative session next Monday. Thank you.
Thanks for, Jack. You know, like, like Julie, I was out at Red, White &amp; Boom on Sunday night. I mean, it was just great to see our people out there, enjoying it. When I, when I drove up Eastern Shore Drive, every parking lot was full, all along the sidewalks, everything was, was just, was just completely full up and down Eastern Shore Drive.
Our team was packed.
Yeah, so I mean, just every parking lot on the south end of town, and even in Fruitland, I think, was, was full. The, the vendors at Red, White &amp; Boom were busy, the businesses all up and down before. So it, you know, great, great for our economy, great for our community, and I think everybody had a really good time. So just great to see everybody. And like I said, if you haven't been vaccinated, get vaccinated. Take care of yourselves, take care of your neighbor. See you all Monday night. Thank you.